Evening, it's five thirty-two. I could call to order our December twelfth Vernon School Board meeting. We do have a fairly full docket tonight, so we're gonna try to keep things moving along. We do have public input. First of two. We will take public comment tonight from our virtual audience. You wish to speak during the public comment sessions? We allow in-person guests to speak for three minutes first. Once we go through all of the in-person guests, we'll open up for virtual speakers on Zoom. And, excuse me, in order to speak, please do the following: raise your virtual hand, enter your full name in your avatar profile. When speaking, turn your camera on and say your full name and town of residence. When these are complete, you'll have three minutes to speak. So we do not have anybody in live in attendance tonight for it so far, but we do have somebody online that would like to speak or ask.
Their hand was up. It's no, uh, it's not up currently, sir, but it was up.
Okay.
So I don't know if Eileen would like to raise her hand here. But I've just been saying that we were muted. Oh, maybe. Yeah, it might have been that. I appreciate that. It's just open to sir. All right.
Okay, our second item tonight is a board vote on the Mount Vernon Education Association contract. We have a tenant of Adrena. And I would take a motion to do that.
Make the motion. Yeah, if you want to make the motion, that'd be great. As chair of the, you're the chair of the negotiating.
I will make a motion to accept the negotiated Vernon Education Association's three-year contract.
I will second.
Do we have any discussion questions from board members? Uh, roll call or just?
Roll call, sir.
Okay, so, uh, roll call vote. Mr. Stokinger?
Stokinger, yes. Amber, yes. Torres, yes.
Hinkley, yes.
Eckoff, yes. It passes five, nothing. We would like to thank all of the teachers, uh, and Ms. Hayes. Uh, the negotiation process was, uh, productive, obviously. We got to a contract which we're thrilled about. As with all negotiations, we, there was back and forth, but at the end of the day, uh, able to shake hands, we, we feel that, uh, we have a nice contract in place for the next three years. More details will be coming out, uh, as we're closer to March. But for now, we are, um, happy and I think our, our staff is happy as well. Next up on our agenda is the consent agenda. Tonight includes two items. First one is the draft minutes from our November seven meeting. And the second one is unanticipated revenue of three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and four cents from Hanford Health Schools program. Now, any questions or comments on the draft minutes or that revenue? I would like to make a suggestion comment on the Hanford Health Schools. And I was hoping Tom would, you know, because I know it goes into his kitty. But does it make sense for us to take that type of funding and put it towards the lunch program since we're going to see a line of the deficit? Or is it better to keep it with Tom so we can spend it on programs?
Yeah, having the principal have some discretion over the funds.
We will leave it. Anybody else? Leave it as usual. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda of the draft minutes and unanticipated revenue of three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and four cents? Passes five, nothing. Thank you. Next up, item five, reports. And first up is our facility update. And
Yeah, within that, there were two, two documents for you guys to review. There was Roger's monthly report uh, in, in there and then also a, a facility memo that Steve can speak to this evening. Um, so if there's no questions on Rod, Roger's report, I'll have Steve kind of walk you through a little bit of the memo, the discussion on that.
Sure, happy to. So if we look back to the November meeting, that followed the October presentation, remember the meeting we had in the NPR room? And then we had just a follow-up and discussed where we were and we had some, uh, public comments about and, uh, through Zoom and in person, there were two questions that we said we'd follow up on. One was the question, um, that came through Zoom, um, based on a previous facility work. There was concern about that the state had a regulation that would not allow seventh and eighth grade to be on the site because of the size of the site. And so, um, and, and working with, working with Harriman, uh, they confirmed and sent the regulatory statute that said there is no longer a site requirement for schools. There are recommendations, but not requirements. So, uh, it is within the board's purview to work on a plan to have seventh and eighth grade on this campus. You are not violating any state. That's a change since, um, that, that work was done a years ago. Okay, so that's been verified by the handbook. I think I quoted the handbook in the memo. The second question was, um, there was, um, you know, the presentation in October included a pretty uh, thorough audit of the building and add-ons, right? And this was done in a way that the community can weigh in and either subtract or add, whether you want preschool, whether you want rooms for increased enrollment or, um, and this is where there's a culture in each community that is different. I worked in a community that was doing everything they possibly could to get a fire suppression sprinkler system. And people said that they worried about that. And so to be honest, we worked it in, in just as a possible choice, right? There wasn't anything. So the, the price was listed there. Now Roger, who's an expert in this field, wanted to make sure that it was made clear that this estimate is not a construction management estimate and it's not a standalone estimate. That part of a renovation of the school Harriman projects, uh, including the, like a sister and tank and all that to be somewhere between a six hundred and six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But Roger wants to make sure we understand that if today the board said we want to just work on a suppression system, because we're not opening everything up as part of the renovation, it would be more expensive. With me as part of a giant renovation where we're doing pipe work and we're doing some stuff, it can be that amount. But if it was just a standalone, it would, it could conceivably be more. And if a construction management firm did the pricing versus an architectural, they call, Harriman calls their pricing rough order of magnitude. It's a, it's a true estimate. Where if you hire a construction management, they're looking at this pipe costs ten bucks, this labor costs this ten bucks, and it is a construction cost that they're going to stand behind and say, look, Mount Vernon Board, if you want to do this, this is what it is. You with me? So we have an estimate, um, but it's, it's a rough order of magnitude that is connected to a renovation program. So those were the, the two updates that the community wanted. And then in April, we're going to talk about the differences between Amherst Middle School, seventh and eighth grade Mount Vernon Experience and the seventh, eighth grade Mount Vernon Middle School. To, to inform the community, how the community understand what the educational and student experience difference would be if you're down the hill or up there. You with me? We would still like to, if it's okay with the board, to have Harriman, have Tom arrange a staff meeting in January so Harriman can at least bounce off their stuff and get some feedback from the people who use this building every day to take a look at their plan. And then we go February, we go, you know, into deliberative, then March, then April, we'll get back into it. But I think having Harriman meet with Tom and just keep moving forward and getting feedback would be a good thing if, if that's, uh, okay with the board. Does that make sense, Tom, that in January, one of your staff meetings, we'll bring Harriman and just show them and get some feedback? No, we think that doesn't work. We want it over here. And I think getting teachers and Tom's input together for an hour or so, take a look at it, is, is really valuable in there as they move forward.
The hot stuff, Tom, still?
Yeah, for you, just in your, just in your eye, wouldn't that?
Okay.
Uh, so that's where we are in facilities. Um, I'm, I'm not, hopefully, um, Anne and Eileen and Peter, I think, were the ones that guided some of those questions at the last meeting. If, if you would like that memo to be emailed to them, we'd be happy to do that.
I was gonna say.
That's why Mike asked for it in memo form so it could travel.
Yes.
We can send it to people.
Say yes, and we'll also post it up.
So we'll send that to P, we'll post it. It'll be, and, but we'll send it to the people that seem most interested.
Yeah.
Please, and we will do that. That's why, uh, Mike wanted to report. Cool beans?
That's great. Thank you.
It might be best for us to get other things passed at that meeting with the school teachers at, at one of the meetings this after the vote in March.
If, if, if you want to wait and do.
That's my part. That's my advice.
And then that's perfectly fine if, if that's the way. I just wanted, that's why I didn't want to do it without bringing it here. If you want to just table it until after the vote in March and not work with the teachers, I, I was with you on the community stuff because I don't want to bog it up until we get, but if you're more comfortable doing that in March and beyond, um, that's fine.
And I don't really have a preference, so.
I don't, I don't have an opinion on that. So good. Right? That's what we'll do.
Yeah, of course. So we'll table that into March and then in March or in April, we'll have the big discussion about day of life. And that, um, Chelsea will send this memo to the people who've expressed significant interest in ask those questions. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Uh, next up in our reports is, uh, Treasury's report from October twenty twenty-four. And right behind that is the Treasury's report for November twenty twenty-four. So I'll refer to Ms. Spacey if she wants to add any texture and questions from the board or comments.
And just standard reports from our treasurer who's doing a great job and getting us with those reports in a timely manner, uh, which we greatly appreciate.
In the last year of work.
Yeah, there was some catch up. So we have a new treasurer and she's, uh, following the format that we use on the other districts and, um, getting them to us. Um, and more typically just, um, on the basis, so just for classy.
Excellent. Um, next up, item number four in our reports is the food service.
Mm-hmm.
And especially once again.
Yeah, so Crystal put together a pretty comprehensive memo just to give you an update on the, uh, food service program. There's some, um, context in here, uh, and then some, uh, financial reporting, projections. So we do have a new kitchen manager, um, who's doing a great job. She was the assistant previously. Um, and so we're still looking to hire an assistant. We're filling that role with substitutes and actually Crystal, who comes up here, um, on a regular basis to, to help out as well as to train the kitchen manager. So she, we did implement the price increase. Um, and, uh, we've, uh, we've been able to add some additional revenue, um, without seeming to drop participation, which is great. Uh, she has some new procedures in place where she has more of a hands-on approach with the grocery orders. So that's going well to better monitor the cost. So, and you can see from, you can see the projections where we are projecting a, uh, transfer from the general fund, but with that transfer, we're showing uh, no net loss right now. So it's still early, but we're, we were pretty excited to be able to project that at this point because that typically hasn't been uh, the case in Mount Vernon. Uh, she's implemented the new six-week cycle menu, uh, that allows us to pre-cost the items, uh, before they go live. Uh, make sure they're compliant with the standards and requirements for, uh, from USDA. Um, and eliminates the chance of any, um, administrative findings for, um, nutrient analysis and claiming. Um, so she's, um, we're, we're pleased with, with how that cycle menu is rolling out. Uh, it's also the same menus as Clark-Bulkin, so we have some efficiencies, uh, in terms of, uh, the work that Crystal is doing as well. I guess there was a grilled cheese controversy, controversy. So grilled cheese apparently is not being eliminated from the alternate meal choice due to a student petition in September. So while, while the cafeteria was piloting salads. Um, so, uh, Crystal's working on a solution to make sure that we comply with the nutrient standards for next year. That was why that was happening. Um, she's updated her five-year plan as part of the, the budget process. The equipment is all in pretty good shape. I think that's really, that's really it. Looks there any other questions?
I have a question. I just had a comment. And, and comment question about the number of breakfasts that you're serving has increased dramatically. And is that, do you think that's because of the earlier start time?
My fault.
Steve was telling secrets.
What was the question?
Maybe it was a secret grilled cheese recipe.
Yeah, I heard nothing.
Nonpartisan grilled cheese. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Breakfast participation, which is awesome.
Yep.
Is like growing. Lunches are declining for the most part. And I'm just curious, is that a result of an earlier start time that we flipped? That there's more kids
So.
wanting to take the breakfast, but it just really jumped out that, I mean, from twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, like August, September.
So twenty twenty-two was the universal three meals.
Right.
So that's why that was crazy through the room. Um, twenty, twenty-three to twenty-five.
I mean, in November, we did, back in twenty-three, there were two hundred and fifty-eight breakfasts and now it's up to eight hundred and seventy-nine. Which is fine. I just, I just have a trend.
Yeah. I'm not sure why that's so high. That is, that is a huge leap. Um, I could see if I can find out. I don't know, Tom.
No, I, I actually, I don't know. Um.
I think it's great that we're getting kids fed, but I just was.
Yeah, that's a great question.
There's a big shift there of.
Yes.
Yeah, the lunch is more stable, but you're, the breakfast is.
It's a good question. I, I don't, I can't think of anything that's, nothing's changed.
Yeah.
I mean, the cocoa pops are amazing, but I can't think of anything specifically that's changed there. So.
It just something else.
Yeah, yeah.
But I thought the report in itself was excellent.
Yes, yeah. So we'll try to bring these to you quarterly so that you have an idea of where we are. Yep.
Questions from anybody else? Number, nice, nice job. And thank God their grilled cheese has been seen.
Yeah, I love the kids petition.
Yeah, it was great. It was a great thing.
So cool.
They had a great job.
I just had a picture of mayhem in the multipurpose room with, you know, grilled cheese being thrown and just total outrage.
Grilled cheese, grilled cheese. Do you know that you chose buying grilled cheese?
What's that? No.
So what it was, was the kitchen had decided that they were going to switch to a grilled cheese, um, a hot lunch, like it was going to be a hot lunch. In the past, it wasn't a hot lunch. It was an option. Okay? So kids had the option every day to get grilled cheese. So now it was no longer the option every day. It was the hot lunch. So it, it joined the rotation. Well, we kids love grilled cheese. Yeah, yeah.
They wanted it.
Eat it every day. So now it's back to the everyday. So, uh, yeah, we're back to regular.
Customer voicemail.
We're good.
Absolutely.
Should have anticipated that.
True. Yeah, I mean, it's comforting.
Who doesn't?
Except there are some changing USDA requirements, so it might not be able to be so next year. So we'll see.
Those are below the limits.
Yeah.
Yes. Tomato, yeah, yeah. It's my play, right? They said they adulted up sometimes.
Next up is, uh, enrollment data.
Yeah, so I can speak to, to, to both those. Uh, we're real quick, uh, appreciate the work that we do to kind of track it. And right now, we're sitting at two forty-two. Uh, that's, you know, um, you know, continued growth. Uh, but I wanted to point out the, the NASDAQ projected, you know, we're at, the actual is two forty-two and we're, we're NASDAQ projected two thirty-four. And I just want to keep that in mind, you know, for, for you guys. As you go to the next NASDAQ, um, sheet that was provided, um, that we work with New England School Development Council to project enrollment. And so if you have the ability to open this or, or see it, I just want to point, uh, attention to, to just two pages. And I thought it's worthy to note on page eight. That I gotta make sure. First one. Yeah, on, on page three, rather, is the ten-year projection. And then two four, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, enrollment of one eighty-seven, and its projection for twenty-four, twenty-five was two thirty-four. And we're sitting right around two forty-two. So it's relatively accurate, right? So if you go to page eight, which, or five, rather, projected enrollment, you look, we're sitting at two thirty-four and ten years later, we had two seventy-nine. So I think that's worthy to note for the board as we have conversations around facilities and we have conversations around, you know, programming, you know, personnel, and then at, at one point, you know, it peaks to two ninety-three in two thousand thirty, thirty-one. So people are moving to, to Mount Vernon. And so I think we just need to keep these and it, it, it's proven to be accurate, relatively accurate, and it's used by many, many school districts throughout the winter. So I just wanted to note that for you guys, it's a report received and, uh, we can have more conversation on, on the impact of, and the realities of that, uh, as we work. So I just wanted to note that for you guys.
Quick math, I'd like to, it's like seven and a half kids per grade roughly. So it'd be like three and a half kids per classroom. Yeah.
But if you look at the detail, it's really chumped up into one year.
Yeah.
It is really a bubble that comes through.
Yeah.
Instead of having thirty-ish kids in a class, there's sixty-one here.
We'll just keep, you know, plugging away with it and, uh, so I just, what we see for you tonight.
Thank you. So we have to accept all those votes exactly now, just before it's going to die. Thank you. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a sidebar here, so I apologize, but I want, uh, we're gonna jump all the way down to, policy, which is item number twelve. The reason I'm doing that, Jess is on the committee. She's done some work on it and Leaf has also been on the committee. Jess has got to leave and had about six minutes. So I want to give her the opportunity to speak to those.
The wars. So, um, the policy committee meets every two weeks. Um, I know some of this is old news to some of you guys, but, um, and we review the NHSBA puts out updates, um, a couple of times a year. So we review these and update as needed. Sometimes we, they provide us with, they always provide us with sample policies. Sometimes we just modify what we have. Sometimes we just accept the sample. So in the case of these ones, um, ACD, the Accommodation of Lactation Means, this was not the policy that we had. However, it is required by law. Um, the policy was written, um, and references RSAs. So we left this one as the sample and sent this to, um, sent this to boards for, um, a vote as is. Um, DJ, which is about purchasing, was one that we'd had. This one was recommended, but we have had it, so we kept it. Um, this one, we just revised, revised it to add language, um, so that the, that a designee of the principal is able to receive supplies in the building rather than having to, um, be done by the principal every time. So that was just an easy, um, sort of procedural change to make things easier on school, um, admin. EHAB is about data governance and security. This is another one that is required by law. Um, and this one was just a small update. Um, and this one, generally, these are updated based on RSA changes. So this one was just revised to include CTE students, um, and then some small language edits. Um, GBCD, um, Background Investigation and Criminal History Records Checks, another one that's required by law. Um, so this one, um, we actually had a lot of discussion about this particular policy. Um, this one was, ended up just being revised to include language so that these background checks can happen every, they're going to be required every three years for positions that aren't um, guided by a code of conduct. So, um, support staff, that sort of thing. Um, so that one was an, another easy small change. Um, JKAA, the Use of Restraints and Seclusion. This is another one that is required and guarded, uh, guided by an RSA. Um, this one had a lot of changes, um, done by Dr. Jennings, our Director of Student Services. Um, we had a discussion with her at, uh, one of our last meetings in October. Um, this policy, um, was revised to reflect the passage of, um, a couple of House bills, um, that were amending various provisions of an RSA. Um, so that was the changes that you would see here. And then the last one is KCD, Public Gifts and Donations. Um, this is another recommended policy, but we had it already, so we just revised it um, to reflect, um, a House bill change, um, which increased the amount from five thousand to twenty thousand of unanticipated revenue a school board may accept without the need for the seventeen notice and public hearing. So those, those are the changes you'll see. Um, and those are all included in our packet for review. Um, there were a few that we either didn't, didn't change or, um, revise at all. Some were required. Often in these cases, we just sort of review them, change the date that they were reviewed. So that's kind of what happened here. None of them were, um, none, there was no action. We just reviewed them, changed the date so that we know each year, um, when these were last looked at. Um, and there's a list there. So that's it. Those are the ones that we need to, um, vote on. Thanks.
So we need to vote on the ones in the green box, correct?
Correct. Yep, so.
Could you, could you tell me really quick what does CTE stand for in the, the data generation?
Career and Technical Education.
So it's the kids that go Milford National for more technical education.
Okay, cool.
Any other questions? So I'll make the motion to accept ACD, DJ, EHAB, GBCD, JKAA, and KCD.
So real quick, it's listed as ACN on the attachment, so I don't know.
It probably is. I think it actually is ACN. Let me just double check.
Referring to the right one, that's all.
I think it is ACN actually, because I fit that policy.
Do I have a second for accepting those policies as reviewed?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Amber. All those in favor? Passes five, nothing. Same, thank you, Ms. Hinkley for that.
Yep.
And also Leaf for, for you do a nice job on that committee. So thank you. Drive safe.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us go through that.
And next up, we have our full year twenty-four financial audit presentation. And for introductions and the like, I will, let Ms. Spacey take over and use our.
Thank you.
Guest.
Yes, so Matthew Murray from Vashon Clouquet, um, who worked with our staff on the point, point four audit. Um, so I'll introduce him, uh, and just before it starts, I just want to thank all of the business office staff. Uh, Katie Hannan, our Budget Director, who works very closely with Matthew. Lisa Shadray, who is our CPA and Certified Fraud Prevention, um, Expert, um, who is our, is our CPA and our accountant. Um, also works closely with Matthew and his staff. Um, Kim Pradett, who is our Payroll Specialist, uh, who manages all of our districts and all of the different CBAs and federal state requirements, um, does a great job. And uh, Karen Sainsbury, who is our Accounts Payable Specialist, um, who also does a great job with all of our invoices and, uh, getting our manifests out every other, other week and does a, um, or every week, every other week for, for this district. Um, and Lindsay Santana, who is our Bookkeeper, um, who also worked with Matthew and his staff, um, does a lot of the reconciliation work. So, um, they all worked closely when Matthew and his staff came, um, in the fall, uh, there was, uh, one onsite day, I think, one or two, maybe two? Uh, there was uh, one onsite day, I think, one or two, maybe two?
I I was there for a second.
Okay, yeah, so two days, um, also a lot of our work, we're able to to upload electronically. Um, and I think it was um, a smooth process from our standpoint. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to Matthew to go over um, the school districts audit.
You said Matthew Murray from Vashon Cluke and Company. Um, most important thing for the user of financial statements, the board, the taxpayers is your opinion on financial statements. So the district has an unmodified opinion on its financial statements. Basically, there's no material statements and all the required disclosures that are um. Are present in the notes of the financial statements. If you happen to look at the, what we call the government-wide financial statements, which is your statement of deposition and your statement of activities. Um, you'll see on the statement of deposition, the district has a deficit net position. And so this every year, it's the, you're gonna continue to see that. And that is entirely due to, yes, the statement sixty-eight and seventy-five, which require the district to report. It's proportionate share of the Hampshire retirement system's unfunded liabilities. Looked at numbers real quickly on that, and that causes basically three point one million out of that two point six million. So without that, you'd have roughly a five hundred and thirty thousand dollar net.
Was that related to, I'm sorry?
So every municipality that's a contributing member to the Hampshire retirement system. Yeah, again, allocated out like the six billion dollar liability. Is allocated out to everybody in the Hampshire retirement system, does it based off of? How much did you contribute in during that measurement period? So the number that you're actually seeing in your financial statements is from June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Because of the way that the standard is written and you're allowed to use an actuarial valuation from um. Two prior years, it's rolled forward to twenty twenty-three for the measurement date. Um, the Hampshire time system doesn't really ever print their twenty there. So the number that would be for twenty-four. The Hampshire retirement system doesn't release those until February or March on an annual basis. But the way that the standard is written is it allows us to use the numbers from one year prior, so um, if. Off the top of my head, I don't know where the market conditions were. Twenty twenty-two versus where they were, I mean, twenty-three versus twenty-four. I'm assuming that based off of what the stock market has done in this year to date. Twenty-three, you'll see a much better funded position of the plan. But then they use a smoothing technique with the deferred inflows and outflows of resources. And they get to recognize portions of the difference in the actual expected earnings on the plan over a five-year period. Um, so let's try to get very technical on that. One of the things uh, important to everybody is how did the district actually perform on its uh, against its budget? So if you look at its schedule one budget versus actual for the general fund, it's page twenty-six in the financial segments. District was able to. Have excess revenues over what was anticipated. And a lot of what you're seeing in there is interest income related, and that has to do with the fact of. There's two things, and I believe that what? The district is trying to project out its revenues three months into its fiscal year. Cause that's when the MS. Twenty-four, thank you, because I was gonna use the ten ones. Um, that's when the twenty-four is provided to DRA and they go through, they set the tax rate. So you're trying to project out the remaining nine months of the year for your revenues. Three months in, which is, it's it's very difficult to do versus if you were a December year in municipality. You're setting those revenues nine months into year to year, so you're only after, you only have to project out three months. And the district started the migration process from, I believe it was M and T Bank before to TV Bank. And as part of that, you're actually able to get much better interest rates through TV Bank. Than what you were previously getting through M and T Bank. That's why you see the thirteen-ish thousand dollars um, for the difference in interest income. District was about a hundred and. Eight, a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars underneath its approved appropriations. And that's a combination of you see the, the one eighty-five for the expenditures and the eleven thousand six hundred dollar deficit. That you can see on the transfers. And if you have concerns about the the transfer, why it had a deficit from the original budget amount. That is the ultimate deficit that's run by the food service program. That the board authorizes, okay, you have budgetary surplus and you have the fund balance to be able to. Transfer to eliminate the deficit in the food service program and that get done on an annual basis. Um, so the district was actually able to, I think Amy and I talked about it, it's about roughly two and a half percent. That the district was underneath its approved budget, which was actually pretty good. We see some school districts where it's in that general like five to eight percent. So active year, you're down at that two and a half percent, you're doing a very good job in projecting out what your actual expenditures are supposed to be through the year. The part of the audit, um, I'd say is. We look at, we look at student activity funds on an annual basis. Um, and this is the the first year where we we pull a sample of both. Payments that were made out from the student activity fund and the actual receipts coming in and getting deposited. Um, and in the current year, out of the sample that we selected. We noted that there was one where there wasn't any, there was not a dual signature on the receipt. So what we reckon, we did it as a management recommendation, talked to Amy and the staff while we were out there and and came across it was. Your best practice is for the person who is remitting the funds to somebody. To fill out a form, sign off that this is how much I remitted. And then a secondary signature for the person who said, who's basically counting it and saying, I'm in agreement with. The amount that was received and out of the sample that we had selected, there was only one. That we ran into an instance of that, but we figured like, okay, it's a, it's an opportunity to make you aware that. On an annual basis, you know, we're not just saying that everything, everything is fine, we're not seeing anything. So when we see something, it's worthy of, we're not gonna put that in a, in an internal control letter and say that you have a significant deficiency in internal control. Or financial reporting or material weakness. We just, we make it as a management communication letter to the SAU management, school board. So that you're aware that there are things that did occur during the year. That don't rise to the level of a significant deficiency in internal control.
What was the sample size out of that?
So on this one, I think we selected, it was either ten, ten to fifteen. So we tried to do it representative of um, like the population itself. Look at it and say, oh, how many deposits were made during the course of the year? And then try and get a sample size of that, you know, we're, we're not gonna go through and and test every single individual deposit. We're not doing a forensic audit. Um, so based off of that, the fact that we only have one, and this is the, this is the only time that we've run into it in. The three years that I've been um, responsible for running these engagements.
And that sample sizes throughout the year, and it isn't just one.
No, it's it's not limited to one month, anything like that. So what we're doing is we get detail of it from the operating system. And all, that's where all the deposits are recorded. And we'll pull from that and then go to the actual student activity led um, the ledger. I'll call it lectures, what like, the actual deposits themselves, the checks. Um, that the school district or the school brings down to the SAU office. And that's where we go through and basically verify and say like, okay. Um, is there dual signatures on it? When was it actually collected? How quickly was it deposited? Cause what ends up, what ends up happening is this is our most common finding that we write up places is that. It lacked dual signatures or it was collected. And it sat around for two weeks, three weeks before it ultimately got deposited. Anybody have any overall questions or guess, review the financial statements? Glad to answer anything.
I'll jump in real quick, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just looked at, I just saw this now, just a one quick thing I noticed on page. Row number four, the first paragraph, government-wide, if you could explain that to me. It says the, towards the end of the second sentence, total net position was a deficit of two point one million, six, six, three, seventy-one. A decrease of one forty-three. But in the prior year, if I'm reading this correctly, it was two million oh twenty-three, so it looked like the deficit increase. Not decrease, so I'm not sure.
So it's a decrease in the total net position.
But an increase in the deficit over the prior year, because if I look at the prior year. If it, I'm assuming the two million twenty-three is the prior year amount?
Two million twenty-three, yes, that's, that's the total deficit net position in the prior year.
Right, right, and it actually, the deficit increased to two point one. So I don't know if I'm reading that paragraph correctly, because the paragraph says a decrease from the prior year. It could be semantics, but the way I'm looking at it, you actually had an increase in the deficit.
An increase in the deficit, it's a decrease in overall, overall financial position.
Okay, okay, so that's how I need to read it. You have less available, basically, okay, got it.
Cause I have to, I have to, what you just did, I have to do every year when I'm going through the M D N A. Is, okay, think of it logically, what actually happened to it, they had a total decrease in deficit.
And then um, look at the pension liability, you guys aren't required to do prior year comparison to the pension liability? No?
No. That, so it has, it has its own notes to the financial statement.
Is it footnoted?
Yeah, I believe that. On the YouTube, capital S three, three. Long-term debt, they, you guys don't have any, so OPEP is most likely number four. And pension is number five. There's not the requirement to show for pension OPEP, the individual changes. As there would be with the other items that are long-term debt, like any finance purchase obligations and bonds.
Yeah.
Uh, compensated, no, you guys do have long-term, technically long-term debt in the form of compensated absences. So it's probably notes five and six. So you'll see in middle four where we show, here's what the prior year was, here's the individual changes, this gets you to the end. Um, if you're looking to try and figure out what the overall change is. Taking into account deferred inflows, deferred uh, outflows and the liabilities themselves. If you go to page six. These are the items. That take you to get from your fund-based financial statements, which is current financial resources measurement focus ignores everything long-term in nature. To what gets you to the long, to the long term, so. OPEP cumulative between single employer and cost-sharing multiple employer. Actually had a reduction in the total amounts and the pension had an increase in the total amounts.
And then the only other question I have for you now is the, I know you don't review the actuarial calculations, I'm assuming that's done at the state level. For for the pension and the OPEC liability.
So it's audited by Plant Moran, uh, I think they're out of Indiana. Um, they come in. The. Can't remember who their actuaries, but they provide all the schedules to. The Plant Moran and Plant Moran goes through, does an audit of all those. And then they issue their own report and we basically have to take that. And we compare, we look at their opinion. And then take the audit schedules, compare them to the schedules that are prepared by the actuaries. And then. As long as they're in agreement, I've never seen them not be in agreement with each other. We use that as the basis for, here's the numbers that have to go into the district's financial statements. And we have to do what we call it census data testing. Uh, my personal thoughts to it are. I I don't necessarily love it. Because if we did find an error where you have an employee involved as a teacher. But they should be ruled as a general employee. If we reported to the retirement system, it's not gonna do anything to the, to the numbers from prior. All that they're gonna end up doing is looking at it as how it is now.
Yeah, it's prospective.
Yeah, and then they'll make the changes, yeah, they'll make the changes going forward to to what needs to be. You're talking the difference in contribution rates. What should have gone in on billions of dollars, so.
Yeah, the only reason I asked about that was um, when I'm looking at the inflation factor that they're using. It actually went down from two and a half percent, and this is on the OPEC side, the two percent, which I thought may be a little bit low. But when you step back, really, the inflation isn't really what drives the liability. It's really, it's part of the calculation, it's really that discount rate. That actually drives those future liabilities, and I would expect to see the pension liability drop in those years. Just for the mere fact that the stock market was shooting up and driving the discount rates.
So the planned funded status, this is, this is bred out of my alley. Schedule. Schedule five. Actually shows you, it's a, it's a ten-year trend. Um, that it's required supplementary information, that actually gives you the, the planned funded status for the last ten years.
And what's that now?
Uh, the last one was sixty-seven point one eight. So if you, if you look here. Um, you'll see twenty twenty-one for the measurement period, it was funded at seventy-two point two two percent. But then they. At the recommendation of their actuaries. They lowered the discount rate from seven point two five to six point seven five. And then that causes the liability to balloon up, which is why you went from seventy-two down to sixty-five in the next year. Um, so the, the big swings where you see that, you know. June two thousand sixteen, where it was down to the fifty-eight point three, they went from seven point seven five percent down to seven point two five percent. So they, they brought it down and there, they have a gentleman talk at uh, Hampshire GFROA. When we go to that annually. Um, the last time that he presented and discussed it is. They had a plan to get that completely funded over a thirty-year period. Whether or not they're gonna meet that, because typically what we're seeing, especially in some of our municipalities, is that. You have a position where it's a full-time employee. That the town, the school district, they're contributing to the retirement system based off of that individual's wages. And then that individual retires and then they cut the position to part-time, so now there's not the contributions going in to fund the plan. And the benefits are what are promised to individuals based off how long that they work, their average final compensation. And that's driving the liability, so when you have fewer and fewer people contributing in, it's gonna ultimately. Cause it, it's gonna cause contribution rates. To go up, and if you've ever like, I. Did they just set them for the, the next? They're down.
Just a bit, yeah.
So the last, the last two times, they've actually come down slightly. Um, and like a police and fire, it's a police and fire officer, or police officer and firefighter. You, you're contributing thirty-two to thirty-five percent of their pay, so. If they have a hundred thousand dollar salary, you're contributing thirty-five thousand dollars to the retirement system, just for that one individual on an annual basis.
Enrollment in schools have gone down as well, so we have less people paying in.
Yep.
And people are, as you, as you just said, is taking positions out of the retirement system. And um, so it's, when no, it was thirty years when they started, so when's the last year?
I think, I think it's supposed to be twenty thirty-something. It's, it's, it's been twenty thirty, twenty thirty, uh, twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, I believe, somewhere in that area. Um, whether or not they're gonna meet that, if you look at the funding percentage at this point, you know, if it's twenty thirty. We're seven years out, it's sixty-seven percent funded, and it really has never got much above seventy-two percent. Um, so.
Could have bonded it to percent, paid it off and saved billions of dollars, but that was a challenge, it's way too far.
Bad contribution rates from the eighties and nineties.
Chuck Gregg. So it was. He did it, he underfunded the pension. And there's no requirement for them, for the state piece to fully fund their fortune.
So they, they used to contribute a portion.
Thirty-five percent, when I started in this business, thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five, then it went down to thirty, then it went down to twenty-five, and then they cut it out entirely.
Zero.
Um.
Zero.
So that was like, that's a, a giant amount of taxpayers of all the individual towns. Essentially picked up for all the school districts and the local municipality. Um, and I know there's been talks about the state actually starting to contribute again. Um, I think there was a legislative bill that.
Hold your breath, man, hold your breath.
I, from my position. I can tell you that it would be a nightmare, because now you're gonna have R S I schedules based off of. A. Fortunately, a non-special funding situation. So when the state contributes on behalf, now all of a sudden you have a special funding situation, so you, you have ten year.
I'm worried about it. You just had an election, my friend.
It, it, it would be, it'd be a ton of additional work and. You'd have to add a bunch of notes to the financials, like an, another four or five pages.
Were you, your charges for it, so be.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the um, the student activities fund and some other work that. Um, we've already started on that, we were made aware of this as part of the, the audit review, um. So when there's a, um, an early release, the teachers are doing professional development, so we do some odd, some work. Um, sometimes district wide, so yesterday we had. Uh, a meeting with all, with the business office and all of the office managers in all of the school districts. Uh, because it, it was a similar finding um, in all, in all three of the districts. So we had a meeting to let them be aware of the findings, um. They, you know, we have clean audits except for this, so it's, it's important to address. And um, went over best practices, we actually have a large manual that they. Um, have access to and then a smaller sort of a, you know, crib notes for them to follow. We set up a shared Google Drive for office staff and all the office managers to. Have um, a place to have all of these documents, a place where they can share some internal documents that, that they use. Um, so just, just to sort of help support office staff. So that uh, we can make sure that we do have those dual signatures and timely deposits, um. One, one thing with the deposits. Sometimes uh, the office managers will collect checks that might be dated, you know, months before that. So we're gonna have them document when they actually receive the check, so that we're, it, we're aware that. You know, the, maybe the check isn't, is being deposited. You know, in, in April and April first, and they just received it that day, but the check is dated, you know, months prior, so, so there's some. Some uh, best practices that we're gonna um, help implement, we also have Lisa Shadroy, our, our C P A, who goes out and does. Uh, uh, internal audits of the staff, so that's actually happening. Um, but in the next couple of weeks, we do that periodically, so.
But things like that are pretty typical, I mean, they typically don't rise to. And when you consider the amount of transactions you're processing in a year.
We wanna get better, so.
Oh, no, I, I, I totally agree, but that's nothing, but.
Yeah.
Even, you know, rises to a level of concern, so.
Yeah.
So, thank you, man.
He asked all the tough questions, I'll ask the really easy, what's your position on grilled cheese?
So my youngest loves it.
Okay.
Um, and. We'll send it in school with him every so, every so often, make it the night before and put it, one thing, you go.
Grilled cheese.
That's new. Well, it sits in his lunch bag and probably warms up by the time that it gets to the middle of the day, but uh, no.
Four more years of grilled cheese.
Grilled cheese, grilled cheese, tomato bisque. On a nice cool day, that's very good.
I'm sorry, before you run off, man, how, how many years you been on the engagement?
Three.
Three years, so how, do we typically go out, a cycle we go off for R F Ps?
It's, so we have, it was a three year engagement and then basically like.
Yeah, this year, we're gonna be better now, yeah, this year, yeah.
Has Macaulay been on this, cause I recall you were, you've been on here for a while now.
This is their.
Firm itself.
Third year, yeah.
I thought.
We had um. We basically flip flop between the two.
Yeah, cause it used to, it used to be Melanson, right, Melanson Heat?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, Melanson Heat then became Melanson, then became Marco, and now they're C B I Z. C B I Z just bought them.
Yeah.
Just bought them.
Yeah, they got bought out from the end of July.
Yeah, they wanna be these, doing these type of.
Well, thank you very much, and uh, sounds like we're firing on.
Thank you.
Will you buy it?
Thank you, sure.
Sorry. You can jump, if you want, or you can jump into personnel.
Sure.
So personnel update.
Yeah, so we have a attachment the. In the agenda is a retirement re- request. Hmm, from Lori Meter, with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so it'd be June thirtieth. Two thousand twenty-six. As she's indicated, she did miss the, the, the official deadline, but I asked her is. Um, I have no problem with support this, I'll bring it to the board, it's their decision. I think she was just doing some soul searching, a little bit, and it took a little longer, and uh, so. You know, I would recommend the, the board to accept this retirement.
So this would mean two retirements in the same year?
The way it's scheduled right now.
So does that make any adjustment to?
It's, it's in there.
So. This will wait for Pete to get back. Yeah, so we have to, we have to vote to accept the retirement.
Accept, yeah, usually what we typically do is we say, accept resignations, retirement, and. And uh, Lori's done a good work here for quite some time. The valued member of staff, that tested.
It's weird, I can't see the supporting documents. Do I have to log in or something?
You have to log in.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that, and we'll, we'll get it simply figured out by next year.
I'm gonna see a spot to log in. But you have to scroll all the way up.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah. And I have a login, ready safe.
Okay, thank you.
So I will make a motion to accept uh, her retirement with uh, her parents.
Second? Second from nodding the stupid.
Or this? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were second.
All those in favor? Passes for, that's me. Alright, thank you. And now we go to item number eight, principal update, Mr. Barry. I'm sorry, Mr. Whiteletter.
Yeah, alright, thank you, um, great to be here, been a little while. Um, so I, uh, Mike asked me to talk for a couple hours tonight, I'm gonna break this down into thirty minute sections. Um, no, I, I just gave you some highlights.
Using your time.
Um, I gave you some highlights, so I pulled uh, from our goals, uh, which is again, just for my communication to the. To the framework, um, literacy, math, instruction, community are the, the main headings there, just wanna give some quick updates on, on those. Those areas, buying community at the bottom, uh, so as far as literacy goes. As you might know, we are piloting some resources this year in terms of programming for literacy. Um, we don't blindly teach through programs, so really what we're doing is, we're teaching the standards, the competencies, the uh. The areas of focus uh, in our curriculum, and the resources are um, are helping that work, and um. It's been really fun to watch the teachers, uh, they are working super hard. Uh, we had training in August, we had another training actually yesterday during the early release. Uh, for more resources that we're gonna implement in this uh, second half of the year. Uh, really to kind of sum it up. What I'm seeing is some nice connections between reading, writing. And all the components of literacy together, um. Some of those foundational reading skills that you see in the K one, two grades, where kids are learning to read. And then grades three or four, sort of in the middle, then five and six, they're really reading to learn at that point, so we see that flip over time in the seven year progression here. But we're seeing some nice connections between those foundational reading skills, the writing skills. And the reading skills of, of students, and really, that is the goal of literacy. Um, reading informs writing, writing informs reading and literacy, uh, really needs to connect for kids. Um, it needs to connect to experiences for them to really understand and comprehend reading. They need to have enriched um, experiences in their classrooms so they can make those connections, so um. The work has been very, uh, very good, the professional development very good, and I'm excited about uh, the work ahead in the second half of the year. Uh, something else that's in our goals is, we really wanna get kids excited about reading, we want them to be. Uh, unified around that, as a school, we started out our year with the million minute reading challenge, um. We'll see, we're about a hundred thousand minutes right now, we got about ninety percent to go. And are you reading?
Well, so I wanted to ask about that, cause I asked my son if he was participating, and he said no, and I wanted to know why. And he said he didn't wanna commit to something.
Okay.
So I don't understand.
Yeah, it's just logging your reading minutes, it, it's not a, it's really not, it's just, they just log minutes that they're reading. And so we, we don't wanna bog it down, so it's like, you know, so they're not enjoying reading. Uh, but at the same time, we want them to be excited and feel united around it, so Maggie Hall, our specialist. Um, Carly Jennings, our librarian, have partnered on this. And uh, it's something we have been into our morning announcements, our afternoon announcements, we give updates, and uh. I, I put a bullet here, uh, we had an assembly about two weeks ago. Uh, gentleman from Cognia Rees, which is a, a company that promotes reading, came in. Um, they're partnered with the Red Sox, which is pretty interesting. Um, so they did a little rah rah assembly for the kids about reading. Um, and our kids are gonna be entered into some raffles that they're doing, so that's a nice partnership, he's very familiar with what we're doing with the program. Uh, the million minute reading challenge here, so uh, it's just another way to upset kids, um, and staff. Um, and remind everyone that reading is important, you know, so uh, that's going really well. Uh, just real quick, math weekly challenges, you probably, if you're receiving my newsletters, you're seeing those weekly, Charlene Brown leading that. Um, the challenges are, are fun. Um, not required, but challenges that kids can do and then submit to Charlene, and then she's got some. Some incentives for the, for the kids as they do that, so that's going really well, uh, also. As far as instruction goes, we finished term one right around this time, I, I, I uh, had sort of reflected on the, on the meeting and the report tonight. And um, I would say. Of the eighty days of school we've had, I think we're a little over eighty now. I've been in every single classroom every day, minus maybe three days this year, so. Um, I'm in classrooms all the time, I'm seeing the amazing work that our kids and teachers and uh, our staff is doing. Um, I've probably completed, if I was to put a number on it tonight, I'd say. Sixty percent to sixty-five percent of my observation evaluations for the year completed. And um, and a lot of that then rolls into February, and then we start our summative uh, evaluations in February, so going really well, a good feedback, good conversations. Uh, focus on instruction, focus on student learning, and uh, we're getting near the midway point when we do some of our mid-year. Uh, check-ins, dipsticks on reading and, and math and, and writing, so. Um, it's going very well and the conversations have been eventually good. As you probably know, I meet with grade levels every week, that's when we do a lot of our data review. Uh, where they're seeing in the classrooms, where they're seeing in their formative and substantive assessments in their classroom. Um, so those, those meetings, conversations going really well, and then in terms of community. It's been a busy few months, uh, a couple, actually a few weeks, really, the last couple of weeks, um. We've done um, our grandparents special friend day, which many of you probably familiar with. Uh, we had our Veterans Day Assembly in November, fire station visits were October. Uh, we've had, thank you for approving some uh, co-curricular enrichment clubs, like football, very popular. Um, I think I'm losing my fastball though, my, my. My quarterbacking, I'm, I'm a little disappointed in myself, uh, the kids were kind of on me this year. Tell me I, I wasn't, I wasn't throwing dimes like I was last year, so a little disappointed, but Project Paint Club. Feel free to check out the bathrooms, we have some year rolls and some positive messaging that's going up in our bathrooms as we speak. Still a work in progress, we have a few more meetings uh, of the paint club. And then Winter Wonderland was last weekend, we had a great turnout, uh, one of our annual traditions, P T A sponsored, went really well. Uh, we had a book fair last week, we have our toy store this week, we bought some of those high quality items in the toy store. Uh, they may be coming to a Christmas tree near you very soon. Uh, our P T A sponsors a store here for kids to purchase some exciting little presents for their families. So it's going very well, P T A has been in here non-stop for about two weeks now, with Winter Wonderland, Book Fair. Toy Store, so a lot of great things happening, um. And we move into uh, holiday week next week, we're gonna have our second um, store assembly. We're gonna have a guest here, speaking on others first, second of our core values, we did show respect first term. We're in others first now, the O, and then we'll do two more, A and R, and we, we theme that, and we have some fun games we do. Yeah.
Work. Great job, thank you. Questions? I love the hot dog sauce.
Good, air hamburgers, that's okay, close, right, same food group.
Yeah.
Need grilled cheese? And donuts, so actually, yeah, yeah, this is the time of year my family, they.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And thank you for the weekly updates you're sending out to.
Yeah, 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 you're getting those, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So next up is we have our budget presentation and back to Ms. Facey.
Steve's going to pull up the presentation. Show. So while he gets that settled, um, tonight we're presenting draft three of the budget. Uh, there were some changes from draft two to draft three. There we go, yep. So um, as we just discussed, there's an additional retirement. Um, so we have a post employment benefit. Not, oh.
I'm since.
It's your day.
I'm just a part of it.
I'm gonna go back here, we're gonna go back to here, so.
Uh, we've been working a lot, uh, so. I wanted to start off by, you know, um, talking about the budget process. And uh, this is a pretty critical meeting, because this goes from. Kind of the S A U and the superintendent working with you to, to develop the budget and, and. Uh, after we get to presentate, we're gonna have to vote and uh, and it becomes yours. And, and we help you, you know, support and promote and educate and inform, uh, so. For me, I, I just, you know, prepare some remarks, because I think it's really important. That people keep in mind a few things about the budget process. And, you know, partnering with the, the school board and then partnering with the town to support our schools. So the, the F Y twenty-six budget is a step in a series of events that will capitalize. On what S E U thirty-nine has traditionally been known for, while making the necessary changes our students deserve. We all work to ensure we engage, challenge and support all the learners daily. In, in Mount Vernon, we balance high academic expectations, deep care for students, and social emotional well-being, like you just heard from Tom. They, they spend a lot of time here making sure that kids are seen and heard and valued, uh, and. The budget reflects that work, this allows us to continue this work. Um, please know that internally, we think that our analysis results in an appropriate plan that maintains the current level. Of student expectations, while continuing our commitment to the professionalism and the growth of our staff. You hear us talking about partnering with the staff to create the educational experience for kids, partnering with our staff to. Get the educational outcomes that we want, and for us. We, we aim to stay connected to the best student experience possible. We want families to have confidence in what we're doing, and M V does that tremendously well. The other part about this, and I've been saying this for a couple of years, we continue to try to narrow our energies. To provide the education experience valued by the Mount Vernon, Mount Vernon communities. Right now, we're not as narrowing as much as we'd like, there's a lot of work happening, but eventually we think we will be in a, in a system that is, you know. Allows us to have consistent processes and, and, and consistent systems in place. Where people know what they're going to get, and, and I really appreciate that Tom constantly references the framework. You know, because that ensures that the experience here is going to be mirrored at C W, which is at A M S. Cause we're moving in the same direction, and for us, the budgets need to reflect values, and we revalue our work. And the conservative fiscal plan and a focus on our concentrated improvement, it's just really important.
It's just really important to us, all right? We've been, the other piece, and this is led by Ms. Facy. And, and as she works with the various schools and, and personnel, we're committed to examining our practices and our processes in SEU thirty-nine and Mount Vernon School District. This includes the systems that guide us, our instructional practice and the student learning outcomes we see through various measures. We, we go as like zero based as, as po- as much as possible. We, we really take a hard look at it. And Mount Vernon is a, is a, is a challenging budget to, to keep where you need to keep it because of the size of the school and the size of the budget. But the willingness of, you know, Ms. Facy and her team, Mr. Leckleider and his staff to be engaged in the examination of the practices where publicly and welcome thoughtful yet challenging change is commendable. I really do appreciate the work. MV has high expectations and I believe if we continue on the path that we're going in, we're going to continue to meet and rise to the level of the community values and expectations as we, you know, continue to build our systems and our, and our structures. As we consider this budget season, we must hold on to the values from the past that are important, stay grounded in the present and lead and educate students for the future. The budget process is so very important to the evolution as a district. It's very nuanced and it's very challenging. And what we hope to capitalize is to continue to create an environment where kids are engaged, challenged and support. I do think framework helps us get there, but I do want to acknowledge that this budget continues to keep us able to do the work. But we had some win, you know, headwind with the health insurance and the dental rates. You know, everything's double digits on the plans, increases, five percent increase on dental insurance. And, and that's, that's difficult to navigate. And I think we do a nice job of trying to put the, the best plan forward. Please know that this effort, excuse me, please know that I respect the Mount Vernon School Board and its decisions about what the community can support. Truly, I did deep respect for the role of school boards and the work that people put in for, for virtually volunteering. And you guys have a lot of decisions to make on behalf of the community and we appreciate that. I want to, you know, make sure that we say this as we transition this budget from the superintendents to the boards. As we operationalize this budget, please know that myself and the MV staff will emphasize the values of trust and decency as we work through it. Students and families and school boards, community members will be collaborators or partners. And I'm excited about the next few months as we get into this. Welcome any kind of conversation about this. And, and I appreciate the work and the process thus far. And so I think it's important that when people are on Zoom and, you know, where they come in, where they go and read the minutes, that they, they know how hard we worked to make sure that this is a budget is a reflection of the community. And sometimes that gets forgotten by people and, and I really appreciate the board's efforts at this point. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Amy, you can get to the good stuff and Danae, I'm going to share this with you. I didn't bring my printed copy, it's usually a printed copy.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so as Mike said, this is draft three of the Mount Vernon budget. There were some changes from draft two to draft three. As we spoke about earlier, there's an additional retirement that was just approved. So there's a post-employment benefit amount for, that needed to be added to the budget. And that was an additional nineteen thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars. The SEU apportionment is now calculated and that added thirteen thousand one fifty-three as the previous amount was an estimate. The tuition to the Amherst School District was also recalculated based on an updated cost per pupil as well as updated enrollment. And the change in the number of students tuitioned from the Amherst School District to Mount Vernon as two of those students will be attending AMS next year. So these students live in Amherst, so they're not included in the projection of the current Mount Vernon sixth graders for purposes of calculating the tuition. But there was also a reduction in what Mount Vernon receives from the Amherst School District for those, those students. So the total amount of the change with all those calculations factored in is a reduction of twenty-four thousand seventy-five dollars. So there are also some other miscellaneous corrections and adjustments. So the total change from draft two to draft three is, is relatively modest with an increase of just five thousand four hundred and four dollars. So the operating budget is now a two point three percent increase or one forty-nine, five thirty-eight over the FY twenty-five adopted budget. The FY twenty-six default calculation is now point two percent lower than the FY twenty-five operating budget for the decrease of eighteen thousand one sixty-five. That's primarily due to a reduction in student services costs. And the difference between the FY twenty-six default and the FY twenty-six proposed is one sixty-seven, seven oh three or two point five percent. Yeah, so the assumption and drivers have not changed with the exception of the added retirement. This is a contractual obligation as far as calculation. But we only typically only budget for, we only budget for known retirements that are received by the deadline. So we did receive an updated enrollment data report from NESTEC a few weeks ago. So this graph has been updated. The budget by category slide, these numbers have been updated to reflect the changes from draft two to draft three. The curriculum budget was increased by that additional retirement amount, but was also reduced by the Amherst School District tuition amount. And the SEU apportionment was added to the administration budget. For the.
Amy.
Yeah.
Real quick.
Yeah.
Enrollment projection slide.
Yep.
Any way we can put the number at the top of the bars?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
So we know, so people can see what those are.
Yeah.
You know, you're close by looking at the.
Yeah, no, I can do that.
Like it better to have the number there.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we just did that one. So you can go to default calculation. So the default calculation changes from draft two to draft three are the, the same items, yes, the apportionment and the tuition. So the total decrease from, the total difference from FY twenty-five to the FY twenty-six default is that decrease of eighteen thousand one sixty-five. I'm going through some of these slides quickly because you've seen them already, so just highlighting the change. For the proposed items at risk, the difference between the FY twenty-six default and the budget, these are the items that are typically deemed to be at risk of not having funds available. This includes the salary and benefit costs for the non-union staff. Technology, those devices for staff and students. For curriculum, this is the library furniture we've talked about over the past couple of months, the literacy program costs, the interactive displays, which now take the place of projectors for facilities. It's the increased cost of utilities, even though we will need to pay tho- those increases regardless. The cost of the compressor that we've talked about and an increase in three thousand dollars for a food service transfer from the general fund, should there be a shortfall. So the total difference between these two budgets or the default calculation and the twenty-six budget is the one sixty-seven, seven oh three. All right, so this is new information. At this point, we typically do a, a review of the revenue. So the first step in looking at revenue and tax impact is looking at the difference in the total appropriation from the current year FY twenty-six to the budget year FY twenty, FY twenty-five rather, to the budget year FY twenty-six. So we've shown here the difference in the operating budgets from FY twenty-five to twenty-six is one forty-nine, five thirty-eight. So there were four warrant articles that passed in FY twenty-five. One funded from new taxation for thirty thousand dollars, which was the contingency fund. And three warrant articles funded from the unassigned fund balance totaling ninety thousand dollars. For FY twenty-six, there are four warrant articles that are being proposed and we'll get to those later to be funded from unassigned fund balance totaling a hundred and ten thousand. So the total appropriation difference between the two years is a hundred thirty-nine thousand five thirty-eight. So the next step is to review the anticipated revenue. So food service and grants are separate funds, they're separate from the general fund and the revenue just equals the projected expense. Other federal, state, local revenues include Medicaid revenue, special education aid, interest income, tuition and any local grants like the Daleen Library Grant that, that the district receives every year. So the revenue from the, also the revenue from the FY twenty-five unassigned fund balance to fund the warrant articles is also included as well as a projected amount of unassigned fund balance to offset the tax rate. And then finally, to determine the tax rate impact, we compare the total appropriation amounts and reduce that by the revenue as calculated on the previous slide. And then reduce that by state adequacy that is received by the district as well as the statewide property tax. And the result is, in this case, an increased tax effort of eighty-five thousand three hundred and eighty dollars or eight point five, point one five per thousand increased tax impact from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six. So I do need to note that there was a recent revaluation of property for the town of Mount Vernon that resulted in a significant increase, which means the tax rate and therefore the impact is lower. However, individual property values will likely have increased as well, which will affect the tax amounts to be paid by property owners.
What was the tax impact last year?
For the budget? I believe it, we had it just under a dollar, so it was like ninety-nine, I think.
I've been in there and gone last night because the new hire.
Yeah, so it's, it's a lot lower of an impact, however, that's not necessarily reflected by what people are going to pay, so it's, it's important to know.
It also doesn't include the raises for the teachers. See, the last year included raise for honest contracts, which is, which is nineteen cents.
Yeah.
On the new evaluation, it would have been thirty cents plus this would have been, so it would have been a sixty to seventy.
All right, so, so I, I crafted the warrant articles to be reviewed and hopefully moved to the public hearing later tonight after the presentation. So this first article is article two, the, the article one will be the election of officers. So this is the operating budget that includes the proposed budget and the default. Next slide, so this is information on the MBEA CBA. So after several months of negotiations, the MBA and board have come to an agreement on the collective bargaining agreement. I'm going to turn this slide over to Steve to walk you through some of the language changes and then I'll go over the costing amounts that are included on the warrant article.
Sure, now that it was ratified by the MBEA and ratified by the Mount Vernon School Board, very pleased to publicly talk a little bit and there'll be more communication as, as Peter said, as we get to January, February. But this agreement does a nice job improving salary schedule. One of the goals of the board was to attract and retain teachers. This is the most competitive environment that we've seen for public school teachers in my thirty-eight years in public ed. So we really want to have a salary schedule that attracts teachers, especially teachers that are new to the profession and that retains teachers, these teachers, as Tom said tonight and, and Mike as well, are really, really doing the work in supporting our youngsters. So we did a salary schedule and a little bit of longevity. One of the board's goals in entering this negotiation was increased instructional time. So we added two instructional days in the first year, so that's six over life of the contract, which is great. And also this reduces really release days and Tom was in favor of that as well and Mike and the board. We went from seven to four, which gets back about another instructional day. So there's significant more instructional time with this agreement. We also improved professional development. We believe that the induction, as Tom talked about tonight, about supporting teachers with programs, whether it's bridges or whether it's a new literacy program. We are becoming much more evidence research based, we hire a teacher, we want to spend four or five days really inducting them into what we're doing. And we also are very pleased under Mike's leadership to really reward and acknowledge teachers that are taking on deliberate and purposeful improvement of their craft. So this does, changes some language and, and puts the teachers who are dedicated to improvement, we think in the right spot. There was some little benefit stuff, which we like, we, we restructured some health insurance. It was from a, a driver that actually increased faster than the other plans. So it no longer drives each plan, will have its own rate, which we think overall will help cost a little bit. We also work to limit the workers' compensation time to sick time accrual, which is, we think are great savings to, to the district. And we also believe that we want to care about our staff and if there's a, a loss of a close family member, we did increase bereavement time, acknowledging that impact. And we want teachers who have the opportunity to take care of their family stuff, but, and then when they come back, ready to go. So I think it's a great agreement for teachers, great agreement for the students, great agreement for this community. Overall costs that we'll see in the warrant, I think probably coming up is about a hundred and five thousand dollars for the first year, about a hundred and six second and a hundred and five third. So that's the type of increase in the salary schedule that's necessary right now to attract and retain because teachers are extremely mobile, not just in Mount Vernon, but anywhere. This industry then right now, as teachers are mobile because there's more positions than teachers. And so we want to ensure we have high quality, professional, dedicated staff here, we want to keep. So thank you to the board, thank you to MBEA, Mike, Amy, Andrew, Pete on the team. It was an extended effort, but we think we got a good place and look forward to, to informing the community along this process so they completely understand what's in this contract, an opportunity to vote March. Cool beans?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, the agreement is, oh, okay, it's for three years. So the article asks the voters to approve each year of the contract as well as to raise and appropriate the amount for the first year of the contract that will then be added to the operating budget. All right, so the, we have an additional warrant in relation to the collective bargaining agreement that, and it's, so this warrant article would allow for a special meeting should the CBA not pass. This warrant article has not typically been included in, for this district, but is typical in, in many school districts. So what this does is if the contract does not pass, the school board would have the opportunity, if they so desire and vote to, to work with the MBA to renegotiate just the cost items of the contract and then bring it back to the voter. So if this article is not included on the warrant or does not pass, then this option does not exist with the exception of going to Superior Court.
Sure. And then they will work under the old contract and whatever deal struck will be retro to.
So the, this, if there's no contract that passes, then the status quo stays, it's the.
Right, right, the ones, one is, so depending how long it goes, does it become effective back to the original?
It's, it's only in negotiations the board could reward of previous steps or not. And I've seen districts do it both ways, but there is nothing, New Hampshire is not an evergreen state.
Okay.
So there is no legislation requiring steps. The only thing that is required is educational lane changes. Um, is educational lane changes. If those are achieved, they make those, but steps to the longevity experiments aren't, but the board has the opportunity, and this contract is not what's called evergreen. There's two contracts in New Hampshire that are evergreen, that if it failed, they still get their steps, this is very rare, but it's all negotiations.
Alright, um, so this is the warrant article for the property maintenance uh fund for fifty thousand to be funded from unassigned fund balance. So this slope shows the uh long-term capital needs plan. And includes the projects and our post-funding plan through FY thirty two. Um, there are a number of projects planned, including tree removal, door replacements. Um, as smaller projects as well as some larger projects, including boiler and pump replacements. A fire alarm system upgrade, water system upgrade, HVAC. Uh, there are also some projects that are currently being reviewed um to be included. Uh, including ductwork, HVAC units, roof siding, generator. ADA play playground access doors, crack, fill and seal work, so Roger's working on um determining. Where to put those projects. The goal of the plan is always to maintain at least a hundred thousand dollars in case of an emergency issue. This, it should be noted that this plan may also change pending uh the final results of the facilities committee recommendation. For changes to the school.
Got tree removal on there twice, is that just to spread it out?
Possibly, oh yeah, I think he's doing some in FY twenty six, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then does he have another year?
Yeah, FY twenty eight.
Yeah, yep.
Good.
Alright, so. This is the special education um. Warrant article. Uh, so after looking at the impact of. These, the recent retirement requests, we took a look, another look at. All of the unassigned fund balance requests and made some adjustments, we kept the property maintenance fund the same. So after talking to the board chair, uh we added a a new. Uh, warrant article for a fund for post-employment benefits for retirements. And made some small reductions to the other uh requests to lessen the impact. So this can will obviously be a discussion for the board tonight on on what to do. Uh, so the recommended contribution to the special education trust fund was thirty thousand dollars. Um, and it has been reduced to a twenty five thousand dollar uh warrant article. And this is still to be funded from the unassigned fund balance. So, yeah, so just a little um history on, I just put together some. Brief slides to just give some backward information on each of the funds. Uh, so. Uh, this fund was established in two thousand sixteen, you may recall, we changed the name of it last year. Uh, there's currently seventy one thousand dollars. Uh, and working with the Director of Student Services, she recommends a goal of two hundred thousand dollars of the balance. Um, to keep in the fund to cover unanticipated expenses, so the recommended request is twenty five thousand. The next warrant article is the Health and Dental Insurance Fund, warrant article, uh this was created. Uh, the next slide, this was created two years ago, uh the recommendation is um. Is a ten thousand dollar amount from unassigned fund balance. Uh, so this, the purpose of this fund is to cover unanticipated health and dental insurance expenses if needed. The current balance of the fund is twenty six thousand dollars and the balance goal. Is to be able to fund a family plan, which is around thirty four thousand, so we're recommending. Um, a ten thousand dollar request, so that would bring it up to thirty six thousand.
So Amy, real quick, I'm sorry, I should ask this before, the on the special ed.
Yeah.
Do you think the, because the goal is two hundred grand.
Yeah.
So you think with the rejected, was it twenty five, I think it was? Yeah, so you think that will cover the typical, and I know it's difficult to judge. The run rate on an annual basis and still be able to add towards the goal? Does that make sense, so um? Is what we're projecting to put in for this year, requesting to put in. Will that more than enough cover what we think will be expended next year and still add to the.
So we're not, so the special ed fund um is a little bit different than like the the maintenance trust fund and the technology fund.
Right.
Where we're putting money in and we're taking money out, the special ed fund, just the money just sits there in case. It's needed, so there isn't like a project plan to take funds out.
No, no, I understand.
Insurance for an anticipated need, so the budget, what we budget for what we know.
Yeah.
And ensure in case the unanticipated.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I I don't.
It's not a given that we're gonna be pulling from it.
It's risk mitigation, really.
Yeah, yeah, my concern was there was a run rate every year and we're putting in twenty five. Is that still gonna get us towards a goal, because that's gonna eat away whatever contribution you make, yeah, yeah.
We talked to a. Connected to a superintendent of a district pretty close in his size, two people moved in, four hundred thousand dollars on it, this will.
Oh, yeah.
That's why I know how expensive it is, which is why.
Doesn't have the infrastructure to do it, yeah.
We're trying to fund like one highly complex, like the maximum.
So you 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 have one.
A reasonable goal.
If we had a second, we'd be freezing.
Yeah.
And because your one is, Amy doesn't love this notion of a deficit appropriation. So we've been very fortunate and we're gonna build this up, we've done a good job over the last three years, but. I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind if it was accepted, but right now this is where we are, with a with a fund balance.
Okay.
But it was first, you know, while I heard another district, two kids moved in with, it was two hundred thousand dollars each. Then that happened here. We had, we'd be on the struggle bus, my friend.
And then the following year would be part of the default budget, right?
Special ed costs are always in.
Always in the fall.
Okay, so this is just, if if someone surprised us. Before we set the default budget.
Yeah.
In the second year, both of those qualified for special education aid. But the problem is that revenue comes a year after you expand. So the next year, we'd have great revenue, we we'd like that, we'd also have if they stayed in the district. You have a year of expense with no revenue, you have another year of expense with revenue, so you're always catching the tail. I once made a proposal to the Education Committee about having the Special Education Fund follow the child. So if the child moved in, it would instantly be there instead of waiting for the next fiscal, because we know that money's there. It didn't get supported.
And we do have the uh IDEA grant, which is also um. Available for unanticipated, but it's not a huge amount and we always find ways to use that money, so.
But how much of that funding covers the, is it a hundred percent?
Uh, no, revenue?
Yeah.
Now it's sixty this year.
Sixty seven point five percent. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I should have, I should have said that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for asking.
I was hopeful, but.
No.
Yeah.
But anyway, two thirds would help us, you know, it's gonna help. Four hundred.
As a person I used to work for, it's better than a poke in the eye.
Alright, so yeah, so we're on to technology, so this is the technology fund warrant article, where, which we also adjusted down. Um, from fifteen thousand to ten thousand, from draft two to draft three. So uh there is an overall SEU-wide tech plan that um has been developed by the Director of Technology. Um, and includes the um uh the Mont Vernon portion of that. So, this fund was uh established last year to support this plan. Uh, the purpose is to save for large infrastructure costs such. Uh, for items such as telecommunications, networks, switches, access points, uh wide area network costs. The three-year plan recommends a fifteen thousand dollar contribution, but as I said, we adjusted that down a bit. To help fund the proposed retirement fund.
Did we get detail on that from from the SAU?
On the.
Uh, opposed long-term plan.
The tech plan?
Hmm.
Yep, so that's um in the budget file on the cover page. But I can, I'm happy to email it to you as well. So this.
In in particular, this is one thing where I can actually audit it, so I want to see what the actual proposal is. So if he says, oh, I wanna buy a wide area network, like, okay. How did you come up with fifteen thousand or twenty five thousand dollars is what I would like to be able to look at.
Yeah, absolutely, so this part, this uh just shows the the uh the funding of it. So it shows the balance of the fund, the proposed contributions and the projects just over the next uh couple of years. The main project that is be going to be occurring in all of the school districts. Um, is the uh the extreme wireless access access point upgrade project. Um, and there is a also a planned replacement to the current phone system. In the near future, but those details are not in the um tech fund project uh and funding plan.
Yeah, for for example, I saw this and like, you know, you're gonna upgrade something here, but you're still capped at your. Total pipe of how much internet this this building can get, for example. It's like, why why upgrade the wifi network? To have everybody still have four service, doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, we'd have to get some more information from uh Brian Miller, our our tech director on that.
Okay, so.
Above my pay grade.
It's my official request.
Yeah.
Cause I I wouldn't necessarily support putting money into this fund if if it was for something that was not necessarily gonna be useful for the. Uh, for the school.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so you can, if you want, I can help me to his plan and then. Um, you know, if you wanna have some conversations with him about it too, because I won't be able to speak specific. To uh, to that, uh to that part of the plan. Alright. So, uh, this is the um, the new funds uh. Request for the post-employment benefits for retirement. Uh, with a recommendation of fifteen thousand to be added to this fund from a sign fund balance. So just a little um background on why this is being recommended, so employees accrue post-employment benefits. That are uh payable upon retirement, however, a school district, as a school district, we are not allowed to account for. Uh, these payables as earned, as fund balance not voted to be spent is returned to offset taxes. So the district can include the payables as they become known in the budget. Um, and or as an alternative can save for these payables via a trust fund. So this helps to reduce uh budget variability that we've actually experienced um in in the current budget cycle this year. So the recommendation is to establish this fund with a contribution of fifteen thousand. From unassigned fund balance with an eventual balance goal of fifty thousand, which would cover. Uh, a a long-standing salaried um teacher who's been here for for quite a while. So we saw, we saw that um as being added to the budget this year.
Well, what's interesting about this, what Amy pointed out, in some districts. If they retire in the same year as the request, you immediately get a redu- a savings in staff salary. So if you do something with thirty years, we typically hire like a master seven, the way it's structured in here. Is you pay out next year as staff members or as employee here. So you are not getting a savings of reduction in salary. So three years from now, we can put that as a to-do and take a different look at it, it was too close to the end and there's too many people connected to it, but. It's easier if you put fifty thousand dollars in there and you can subtract thirty thousand in a projected salary than the net. Experience is twenty thousand, here you put thirty and you have a max salary, the master's step salary. So there's, uh you have to wait an additional year to have savings on the budget. Um, so I appreciate it, uh that was a lesson I learned from Amy during this process this year. Um, but it's just, uh, it puts a lot of stress, I appreciate Pete, your leadership on establishing this account. Because of the circumstances I just described, it really is ahead of another budget, because there is no offset. Of a projected hiring of someone with lead with less experience, so this is a nice hedge. Against that having a big impact. Um, and it does shore up our ability, because one of the things the board said last year, and we were really concerned about freezing a budget. Is we would really like the students to have the experience that the town voted for. In when they approved a budget, it's hard when they approve a budget, you have to freeze it or have to do something. And the students don't get the experience that the community thought they were supporting at the at the ballot box. So I think this is a great thing, it'll take a couple of years, but it's one thing that Amy just said. We have the um health insurance one, if this passes, will be full.
Yeah.
Um, that met our our low goal. So that won't be done, and when once we start chipping away at some of these low goals for insurance would be a nice thing, and it also is a self-insurance. And it helps the ability to implement the budget as voted. As opposed to freeze and say, oh, the kids can't go and have like what Tom just said, the the extracurricular activity that they really want. And enjoying the world that people expect, so good work.
Right, so in summary, the uh warrant articles presented are the budget, the. Uh, collective bargaining agreement, the special meeting should the um agreement not pass. The property maintenance fund uh for fifty thousand, the special ed fund for twenty five thousand. The health and dental insurance fund for ten thousand, the technology fund for ten thousand. And the post-employment benefit retirement fund for fifteen thousand. And those special warrant articles are all proposed to be funded from unassigned fund balance. So finally, we have the budget review process and next steps on this slide. Um, I'm happy to report that the Mont Vernon Budget Committee has now officially formed with three members. Uh, they have each taken sections of the budget to focus on. And are meeting uh either in person or via Zoom. Uh, with SAU and building administrative staff to review the budget and ask questions. They have a full committee meeting scheduled uh to discuss their findings. Um, as well as the special warrant articles on Jan- January second. Uh, they'll be attending the public hearing and then vote on the articles prior to deliberative. So it's been really great to have that set up, to have that um that function of the budget committee. Who reviews the budget beyond the board's review, so really pleased if that was able to to come together. And that is all I have for this evening, um, thank you, so.
Back up to the list, that.
Yeah.
I know last year we kind of juggled these around, is everybody comfortable with the sequence that they're presenting them, because we kind of. Well, I mean. Order of importance, based on our feelings as a board, I think, because we're like last year, we kind of rejungled last year, so we may be fine.
The reason it's important is because um, should there not be sufficient fund balance to fund all of the warrant warrant articles? They are funded in order, so and they are worded so where it says up to an amount. So if you, if we have, you know, a uh a difference, then you could fund a warrant article at a lower amount. Uh, whatever's available, typically we have had fund balance to fund all of them, but it is important just in case to to think about the order.
So there's no discretion, just basically.
Yeah, correct, yeah. So I just put them in order, but um it's it's up to the board to to make that decision.
I think the only thing I would think about is moving the technology fund up one, but that seems like such a meaningless change, I'd rather just leave it up as. This.
It doesn't matter enough, and if we do get seven that fills it, we're gonna have to do it again next year.
Right, it's just let it be, right?
It's fine.
I'm gonna do it, no, I like it this way, because we wanna fill that, wanna get it done, so you don't have to keep asking. Well then, here you go, I'm moving above the special education one.
No, I wouldn't, because that's such a deficit where we want two hundred, we're only at seventy one, that that risk is just too much there.
We're just not where we want to be on that one, we're gonna have a long way to go. We're currently projecting to have a really big overage, right? More than usual. Like one, I thought it was one eighty something we saw earlier today.
Um, oh, for.
Projected fund balance at the end of the year.
For this year?
Yeah.
Um, total is about two hundred, which is similar to what it was last year, that includes revenue and expense.
It's similar, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm good with it, so as long as you you folks are good with the sequence and the dollar amounts, then I think we can. Lock it all.
It's great, this is asking for like twenty grand more than last year, right?
Yeah. We had a contingency fund last year that we didn't.
Right, the thirty thousand, yeah. Yeah, but yeah, it is a little bit more.
We, the only thing I thought of too is, you know, every year that we. I get, I guess we get this, we get this money. And then we kinda turn around, these are all great things, we fund them all, but at the same time, there's some value to us. Returning some of that unassigned fund balance back to the taxpayer to for relief.
Yeah.
Balance, there is there is money going back.
There is, yeah.
We just need to make sure that we're.
It's all happening.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
You hopefully a few more years of steady savings and you fill up some accounts, you're not desperate as much.
Right.
Cause to be honest with you. And being light. And it was light special end for we started this journey together. Um you know, we've had some instances, this is, we're on the right track of it, it's such a, there's not a lot of discretion in this budget. So it's a small school with a lot of personnel. So this is how you do it.
And special ed funds is the one that worries me.
Me too.
That one is so impacting, you just have one crushing heartbeat.
And it just happened in the district half hour from my house.
Well, it could wipe out the whole thing and.
And more.
And more.
Yeah, but. I mean, I'd be interested to see what that district does, yeah, my first year in HAW, we had deficit appropriation, special school district meeting. And the community approved the interim lease, it was ugly, but it passed. Um and then then we started building reserves.
So how does that work? So let's say we had to do that. Effectively, what happens? We have to go for, you have to go to court, and you gotta go to the Department of Education, we have to approve this special meeting. Right, but how do you obtain the funds? For the deficit?
You, you have a meeting, they raise and appropriate them to surcharge your taxes.
Okay, so it's a surcharge, okay.
Which George, how do you get so many people up that?
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, on top of.
And this is actually breaking on my rule, we don't talk about this, we're just knock on wood, knock on something, we don't talk about this, but it happened once in my. And I'll monitor Mike and I, we know the soup that's going through this and see what they do, it's a small budget, like. Um you know, if 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 you are in a fifty million, you can do something with it, we're not, we're six million, every dollar spoken for in this wonderful little place.
Pretty tight, you can see last year what was not spent, not a whole heck of a lot.
And last year, in in my year, we had discussions about freeze the budget for some circumstances. That's why we put in a right, the contingency fund last year, we're okay, we were building up some reserves, you make a steady progress. And Heather and Tom and Mike and Amy are extremely good at managing this work. Um so, but you're just gonna keep steady, slow and steady wins the race, but George, I'm with you, the biggest one that makes me is is especially. Um but I think it, when it started before you and I started this, thirty five grand or something, we've doubled it. And if there's twenty five, those are almost at a hundred.
Yep.
Ninety six, and with little little interest.
Yeah.
Four percent.
Yeah.
Once you get more in there, there's more interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean.
We're gonna be close to a hundred, that's halfway to go. A bunch of variability in that line, I could wipe out any of these, yeah.
Just put it all in bid, Cory, we'll be fine.
Don't make any sense. We can ask them to put it on rest for us.
So what what do you need that's from me and us?
Motion to move uh each of these warrant articles to the public hearing.
Can we say it like that?
You can.
As presented.
As presented, yeah.
Okay, I will make a motion to move even summary, they all the warrant articles that were presented to the public here. I will second.
All those are favorable. Passes for nothing.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Nice work.
So now.
Work on this.
So we have um. Uh this draft presentation and there's probably some other slides we wanna put together, so. Um I'll do some work on that and get you a draft of the public hearing presentation. Um and I can do what I did last year, you know, craft some notes for you and whatnot. Um and then do you plan on having, are you gonna present the whole thing or? I know some boards have folks present different warrant articles or however you wanna do it for public.
I'm fine either way, I'm fine with sharing, I mean. I mean, that strong people that bet stronger finance than I am, so.
The only question I have is what time's the public hearing?
Public hearing, I believe this.
Okay.
Either you or Andrew should do CBA.
Some of those on the. That's alright, you take a majority of the other stuff, right, so.
Yeah.
It's at six.
Having everybody involved was fine. I don't need it, Pete.
I should be okay.
Okay, so I'll um do some work on this as a draft and send it over to all of you. And and then you can figure out um who's presenting what.
Yeah, I I should be okay, our our hearings that same day where the P C rules on the. Proposed merger, and they may have to testify that day.
Yeah.
But that's typically, I think around ten, maybe morning, so it should be.
And I can, you know, give you my script, which has a lot of the notes and stuff that that I've written, so that will help. Um and then just, you know, ask me questions and if you wanna add things or change things, whatever you wanna do, it's it's. I'm officially giving you the presentation to make it your own.
No, I appreciate all your hard work on that.
Absolutely.
So if you have an article you wanna do, explain you know.
Yeah, if you, if you, any of these.
Just uh I'll just do number three, cause I'd like to be able to sell that to anybody listening, love it, thank you. Leave the the rest for somebody else.
Good.
What's the date, by the way, of the?
Uh March fifteenth, uh March, January fifteenth. It it is possible that if um the. The staff have until January fifteenth to um. Rescind or confirm their uh retirement request. So if there is a change prior to January fifteenth, I will make that adjustment in the budget. So that you'll have it, so, but if I don't receive that information, then it will stay as it's.
So she she has the authority of the board to amend as needed, necessary based on the retirement.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So you can make our bunch look better, thank you.
Yep.
So we're up to uh item number thirteen, committee updates, I I. Roll it out to the board, but if anybody have any committee updates. Um long term planning update.
Yeah, that's. That's that's myself and 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 Leaf. Right now, we're in the in the mix of reviewing the framework throughout S A U thirty nine and different, you know, uh processes. But one of those is uh strategic planning uh planning committee. And uh Leaf is representative on that, along with uh Nat Large member. And uh members from Amherst and South Heaton, uh we're slated to meet. Uh on December seventeenth. To work through some things to make sure that on December nineteenth. Um we will bring the most current version of the evolution of the framework of of progress. Very kind of round, looking at a different name, like framework of success, we like the framework because that's that's kinda like our red hat. Kind of, you know, things that people know what you're talking about, from teachers to all three districts, to administrators, to kids. Um but we're working through that. Leaf, you have anything else to kinda add, talk a little about the process from your your take of that little committee?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the focus right now is mostly on the framework, right, and upping it. Um. So I think, but you've got input on different stakeholders within the district.
Yeah. So for this is this upcoming meeting, we're gonna look a little bit at division statement. To see if it aligns to to the mission statement, there might be some work and language around there. We're gonna take a look and make sure we're hitting the right stakeholder groups to, when January comes, put this document in front of people for, to be able to get some feedback. Um so we're just helping out with that, um so I'm pleased, like at this point, we've uh. We, you know, met with the building administrator, uh a a couple of times, senior leadership, it's been in front of uh. Students I had a conversation with seventh and eighth graders just today, uh at at A M S. Uh Mount Vernon had a new, a number of students represented on that, and we talked about what what learning looks like in their educational experience. We talked about the transition from M V to A M S, uh it was a great chat, we had a wonderful lunch. And it was like ham and potatoes, it was like family style, so it was very good. And so what the hope is on the nineteenth is to bring updated, so it's not gonna be clean. No typos, it's not gonna be pretty, and then a protocol to go through to provide some feedback. On people's choices with a due date like January something, we won't have an S A U meeting. Um I've attached, there were like an audit of the framework into this document. Um or into this, the the uh the agenda, so one of the first steps we had is we had this principles. That all their goals are aligned to the framework, do an audit of like the action steps and the moves they're making to support the current framework. And uh so that was helpful, you'll see the, if you take a look at it, you'll see some of the things that are happening. Tom has a a pretty good list of different things that are happening in M B, so that's the update, uh we continue to work and I appreciate that, Pete.
Well, thank you, thank you, Lee, for participating. Uh next up, public input, two of two, Mr. Chamberlain, do we have?
Superintendent update.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I skipped over it.
Sorry, no, I just did, I just talked, but I apologize, so. Uh November twentieth, and you guys got a little version of this at the S A U meeting, we're we're starting a. Kind of looking at at technology and well being in S A U thirty nine, uh lots of conversation around device use. You know, tech integration, structural practices around it, uh we believe. Uh we need to take a look at it as the best interest of our students, to be in the best of learning environments that they can be. And uh so the work is there, it's gonna uh it's gonna be a slow process. The key part of this for us is informing and educating students, families. And and staff on, you know, what's trending with technology use, device use, not limited to cell phones. But how we incorporated into our, you know, learning environments, um and so we're gonna be working on that, wanna update people there. Uh transportation update, we had a meeting on a couple Fridays ago now, maybe even last Friday, last Friday.
Yeah.
Um and uh we, we are confident that Butler is trying to address. Address their long term, you know, deficits, uh we were we met with the owner. Uh we talked a little bit about the the brunt that we're feeling right now in the short term. Uh M B is not really feeling that, right, and I'm more concerned about the car line in the morning. You know, and how long that is, and uh and then the transportation. And so for me, uh we're improved, and I think going from fifteen routes to thirteen routes. Has allowed butlers to maintain consistency with that, and uh. The trips are just overall, your M B students are getting to A M S, if they're on certain buses, five to ten minutes late. And that's just the absolute worst feeling, you know, like if you're a kid, yeah, every day you're walking in. Late, it's just not a good existence, and so even it's, we've had the best month of it since the school year started, and still not that good. So we're gonna continue to plug away.
What's their driver's shortfall, have they shared that with you?
Yeah, they, they are like right even right now, we have thirteen routes, they have thirteen drivers for for us.
We're supposed to have sixteen.
When we're supposed to have sixteen, we're trying to fill sixteen routes and they were doing or fifteen, well, sixteen.
Supposed to have sixteen plus one sitting there.
And so they don't, their their shortfall is four four drivers. It's it's a hard license to obtain, you know, and um and it's not as lucrative, so it's real. You know, they're, but we're just continuing to plug away.
That's gonna be a long term issue.
Yeah.
They're they're seeing it, yeah, it's gonna be.
So we're just keep battling and and I appreciate everyone's patience and understanding.
Is it likely that they're gonna come back to us with a higher contract next time around because they need to pay more?
I think you're gonna see that, yes, possibly, you know, I can't definitively say that, but based the way things are trending, you know.
We comped, become current contracts and we're about fifty percent.
We're above what?
So we looked at districts who had new contracts in the last year.
Yeah.
And they are significantly, it was double over here.
We're in the fifty percent.
Just about half, I mean, it's more than, we're at the back end of a four year contract. So we don't report to you, but you're you're right, the the cost per driver went up. Wage and insurance because of the competitive nature, just like what we just said about teachers, same thing in drivers.
So we're in the back end of a four year, but they don't have any cost adjustments on an annual basis? If I'm gonna see a spike.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the last year's really cheap.
We're gonna, yeah, but even then, that's not gonna address the shortage, because that's just making the people, oh, this that.
So yeah, so we have a very difficult contract for year five, which is next year.
Yeah.
And uh but after that, Andrew, to your point.
Well, it it means it's not gonna get any better, because they're gonna be behind the ball trying to fulfill. A contract where they might be potentially losing money if they paid enough to get another driver.
So we're we're optimistic that they have some things in place and then we'll continue to update, get get more information. Um I have a meeting with the executive director and the leadership team at Health Trust with four other superintendents. Salem, Pelham, and Timberland, and uh we all have some of the same concerns and wanna learn more. I I've attached in assembly the question that I put in and, you know, basically what happens when you pay out more in claims and you receive premiums. And and that was my question, and and um what's the impact and and there's some other questions, and I'll come back and I'll report out after. We'll take an Amina, and she's gonna go with us, and uh. And so we're gonna continue continue to learn more, that to see what we can do and and uh so I appreciate, appreciate that. At the end of the day, it's claims, you know, and for us, but.
Claims and plan design, to see, I mean, cause ultimately, I don't think, there's not what you can do about on that side, I mean, we're just becoming older. And especially in the state, and it's just becoming more and more expensive, so we can do what we did and try to offer more younger teachers.
So.
And then you have to wait.
Yeah, yeah, I like to say teachers new to the profession, yeah.
So, and then uh this question came up a couple of times at the S A U meeting, and people were wondering about admin cellphone reimbursement as a as a perk. And uh one of the things that we had in 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 motion before the budget season. Uh we had conversations internally that, you know, we're not gonna have that as a benefit, you know, a a fifty to sixty dollar monthly reimbursement for it. Uh there will be another benefit added into the contract for administrators, but that's not gonna be. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, people and and for the main Pete, that's all I have for tonight, tonight was a full board meeting. And I do appreciate everyone's attention and and work, and Tom, thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks, Tom.
And 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 uh and uh tonight's been a long week for you, so appreciate, appreciate it.
Tom is the the reference to the car, there's just so many parents, the the car line in the morning is long. To get.
I noticed when the weather gets colder, the line gets longer.
There's more kids getting dropped off, less kids riding the bus, particularly in the morning.
I don't have my son walk if it's snowy, so we drop him off, right?
Yeah, I mean, the last couple of weeks has been a few dicey days, or it's cold, windy, whatever, you know, rain, snow, ice, whatever. Um it really fluctuates depending on the weather, I I if it's a nice day, more kids are on the bus. But the thing with the the line here is. Some parents are very reluctant to let their kids out farther down the line, in your phrase.
Oh, yeah.
So you know, I mean, as it goes, George, you know, as it goes, some don't wanna drop, so I stand on the corner. Which is probably about say uh seventh car, sixth, seventh car.
Heard this down.
Yeah, yeah. Goal is, we drop the seven, and then we move seven up, seven, 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 right? But not everyone's comfortable with that, because they have to go up the sidewalk, you know.
Sunday.
They're in the elements and and whatnot, you know, so sometimes instead of seven, it's four, or whatever, you know what I mean? So it just, it's a, it's a, it's a fluid situation out there. Um but we're in the toughest two or three months of the year, where on a day like yesterday. Was it yesterday or the, or one of these days where it's like, you know, raining and icy or whatever, people are less, and I get it, you know. And and I I look at the the clock, right, so. The worst case scenario on these days is we're up by five minutes. The worst case scenario on these days is we're up by five minutes. It's not bad, in the realm of things.
Yeah.
You know, and it's here and there. It's not every single day, but on those days, yeah, yeah. And we we use our judgment, you know, if the line's twenty cars long. We're not gonna stop the car. We're not gonna stop our supervision out there. You know, if we have a trickle, then we'll come in and they'll trickle and.
Yeah, we do.
Judgment call.
So.
Thank you. You ever seen Mr. Mom with Michael Keaton?
Yeah.
Have you seen that?
But yeah, you're doing.
Yeah, you're doing it, right?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Public input, two of two, Mr. Chamberlain.
There are no hands. Oh, there is. Oh, there isn't. So let's give it a minute to me. Oh, yes, there's a hand, sir.
Okay.
Well, it's not there. But I.
I.
Think we should do it?
Yeah.
And uh.
Yeah.
We're gonna promote, Eileen, we're promoting you. If we start a hand, if it's inadvertent, I apologize.
Shall I view?
No, we're moving her over. Eileen will be rejoining webinar as a panel, so that's good. There. It's up.
Hi, Eileen, you there?
muted.
Oh, so I've been through seventeen clicks. Can you hear me?
Hear you now, yes.
Uh you can't.
We can hear you. We're good.
You can't hear me? Bye.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Eileen. We can hear you.
Okay, two, a quick question. I'm from the team, the redundant little class for teacher's salary. I'd like to see a tax impact number on the first year. And. Okay, there was no of that article. And on your public time on the fifteenth of January. If you expect more than the board to be there, I would not hold it at five thirty. I would hold it at least six thirty or possibly seven. That's it.
Thank you, Eileen. Right now it's scheduled for six.
Well, that's better than five thirty. Okay.
Good, Eileen.
Thank you, Eileen.
You're awesome. Bye.
We're good. No one else has hands up.
Public or anything?
No, not tonight. Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion to adjourn.
Second, I'm Mr. Stories. All those in favor?
All right.